He's running about twenty minutes late. Good evening, welcome to the June 3rd meeting of the Martin County Board of Education. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your ally, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Baker?
Let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for this opportunity that we have to gather together and discuss the business of our schools. Father, we thank you for all of the teachers, the coaches, the students, the athletes, everybody that is here. We thank you for all of it. Father, we just pray that you will be with the decisions that are made tonight. May they bring honor and glory to you. For this we praise in your son's name, amen.
Amen. Alrighty, we'll get the businesses of the evening started. I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Say move.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. And now recognitions.
Good evening Chairman He, board members, Dr. White. As you might have guessed, we have a lot to celebrate tonight. And so let's get to it. First tonight, I want to call on Coley Riggins, our AIG Coordinator, to present some match champion awards.
Good evening. So on May 1st, thirty-six students from Martin County Schools, grades three through eight, went to ECU to compete in their first match champions event. And we had several kids that before we went, we selected our team, but I gave them an individual placement. And these are the kids that scored the top three out of the tests they had to take before we went. Third place for third grade is Braylon Whitley from Jamesville Elementary. Second place is Liam Green from Rogers Elementary. And first place is Waylon Yakal from EJ Hayes. Alright. So for fourth grade, third place is Braden Gardner from EJ Hayes. Second place is Joby Burrows from EJ Hayes. And first place is Scarlett Davenport from Jamesville Elementary. So now we have fifth grade. Third place is Jasmine Albereta Solis from South Creek Elementary School. Second place is Revvis Turner from EJ Hayes. And first place is Mario Cavalier from EJ Hayes. So for sixth grade, we have third place Kaylee Thomas from Riverside Middle School. Second place is Audrey Stanton from Riverside Middle School. And first place is Rayla Moore from Riverside Middle School. Alright, for third place for seventh grade is Sep Igasomar from South Creek Middle School. Second place is Jonathan Trup from Riverside Middle School. And first place is Brady Wynn from Riverside Middle School. So now on to eighth grade, who actually also won first in the quiz bowl, which did awesome. But for eighth grade, our third place is Lisandro Rodas Ascamelia. Second place is Mason Revels from Riverside Middle School. And our first place for eighth grade is Krishant Patel from Riverside Middle School. And he also won first place in the Rubik's Cube Challenge. Got your little prize up there buddy.
Alright, thank y'all so much. Way to go guys. Next up, I'd like to ask Ms. Cindy Hill and her friends to join us from Riverside High School. I had the good pleasure of kind of sitting in with this crew, Ms. Hill's class this year on their enterprise project, which a lot of you may have seen on Facebook, which was their Ruff Ruff Homemade Dog Treats. And the whole point of this project was to help them take ownership of their project and raise money for what they call their Enterprise Day, where they go out and they have real-life, real-world experiences, going out to eating things, funding it themselves, doing all the things that we take for granted sometimes. And I see she has brought you all a sample of the fantastic, don't go anywhere, a sample of the fantastic treats. And I want to tell you, this was one of the best experiences I've had on the job, is getting to watch this crew in action. We had several staff members also help out, and they went well beyond, Kim Stevens and several more went well beyond the scope of their job description to help us out with this project. And as they used to say in enterprise, a good time was have all. So if you see them, and when another project comes out, we hope you'll support them. We thank everybody for the support on this project. It was fantastic. Thank you Ms. Hill. I've got some certificates for you to take back. So let's give a classic. Alright, next up, I'd like to ask Ms. Kristi Stevens, our Odyssey coach, for a wrap-up on their trip to Iowa.
Good evening. We went to Iowa. We've been home for a week now. And I can tell you that I miss all of my people that we lived with on the same hallway, in dorm rooms at Iowa State University. I had not seen them since we left. And I did miss them. We had a great time. We performed well. They grew twenty points, and they're spontaneous. And they came twenty-eighth out of fifty-six teams from around the country and world. For them to do that their very first year, it was quite remarkable. I am going to present certificates to these, along with a coach who has been to every single practice, basically, since we started back in September. So Ms. Daniella Reinhardt was a coach with me. Adeline Reinhardt. Paisley White. Who was at a ballgame. Bristol Stevens. Molly Revels. Sarah Scott Uzell, I'm sure I said it wrong again. Gia Rodland Sangan. And Alexandra Reinhardt. We appreciate everyone's support. We appreciate everyone's support in buying Boston Butts and donating for calendars and all the goods so that we could go there. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we've had a lot to celebrate in athletics this spring, and we want to bring in our teams tonight. First up, we want to invite Martin Baseball up. The team finished with a twelve and five record and advanced to the third round of the state two A, two A state playoffs, and was faced with heartbreaking season end, and they displayed grace and class that was really a way to make us proud. And we are proud of each and every one of them. Coach Harmon cannot be here tonight, and Coach Cottle, they're playing, well no surprise, but we have Coach Randy Whitaker with us. And the team members are Bo Brown, Bart Raisen Banks, Noah Cottle, Jackson Harold, Macon Harold, Cameron Lilly, Kayden Manning, Trent Mizell, Joel Pierce, Seth Thomas, Jackson Ward, Easton Warren, and Brody Whitaker. So let's give baseball a hand. Alright, next up, Martin Golf. Ladies and gentlemen, help us welcome our two A Eastern Regional Champions. Under the guidance of Coach Thomas Wynn. They took the title at Ironwood Country Club in Greenville and went on to a wet, hard-plagued run in the state tournament. The team is made up of Coach Thomas Wynn, Sam Hardison, Champ Tyce, Tori Young, Landon Stalls, Isabel Taylor, Dylan Markle, and Sammy Bennett. Congratulations on a really great season, and thanks for representing us so well. All of our teams have given us a lot to be proud of, and they're no different whatsoever. Y'all might have heard, we had a big softball season. Martin softball, come on down. This amazing team led by Coach Bob Lilly, assistant coaches Elizabeth Lilly and Wes Hughes, gave us a season to remember. Finishing twenty-five and four, these ladies closed out the season as Eastern Regional Two A runners-up. We want to thank everyone for a season to be remembered, and it will be for a long time around here. Congratulations Grayson Beach, Kayla Beach, Gabby Bennett, Katie Cargill, Riley Callen, Ryla Etheridge, Kelly Hardison, Bella Harrison, Peyton Lane, Yana Smith, Whitney Stevens, Erica Sturgill, Anaya Williams, Azuri Williams, Izzy Williams, and Taheria Wooton. You all have represented us so well. Thank you so much. We're very proud of all of you. Let's give a little round of applause. Alright, Martin Tennis, come on down. I had to steal a line from head coach Chase Connor to sum up their season. He posted the following words the day after their final match of the season. Said, "Our season comes to a close against Whiteville, five-four in the second round of the playoffs. We finished ten and six on the season, however, it was far from an ordinary match. A three-hour drive, fifteen minutes of playing time, three-hour rain delay, one hour to dry the courts. Four-and-a-half-hour match to the very last court, Whiteville clinched the match at eleven-twenty PM as the rain started falling again." And then the ride back home. But on top of all the challenges, excuse me, but on top of these challenges and keeping mentally and physically fit, our boys fought and represented Martin well. And we must agree, you guys were a fantastic representation for the district. We appreciate you being ambassadors of our school system. And thank you Krisheth Patel, Alan Velazquez, Bradley Riza, Giovanni Garcia, James Lee, Michael Talenti, Brian Vargas, Gustavo Ruckett-Gregas, and head coach Chase Connor, Mary Taylor Connor, and A.J. Garcia. Thank you all. And certainly, last but not least, we'd like to ask Coach Hunter Jinks and the members of the track team that are here tonight. Coach Jinks might be new to the district, but he was not going to let anybody else wind up his folks on the finals for the spring. Janiah Dolberry and Janiah Ransom, who we have here tonight, performed, were in the two A state championship in Greensboro on May seventeenth. Ms. Ransom placed fifth with her five-foot high jump, and Ms. Dolberry twelfth with a twenty-six point eight in the two-hundred. Thank you ladies so much, and again, for being such a representative of our district. We're proud of you. Can't wait to see what's going to happen for next year. Alright, and we have one of our young men from Ms. Hill's class just arrived, so we're going to slip Gavin in here with me. Gavin showed me the ropes on how this project worked, and he helped train a lot of us in the kitchen. And another fine example of an ambassador of our district. Gavin, we are so proud of you and your whole class. And did you want to say, did you want to say what you work for the board?
Thank you for supporting the project that we made from the dog treats. We had a great time. Looking forward to next year.
And our final special good news for tonight. Ms. Samantha Hager, the agriculture teacher at Riverside Middle, completed the Tobacco Trust Fund grant application with the purpose of building a greenhouse on the Riverside Middle School campus. Ms. Hager received this grant, and I'd now like to introduce Allison Jennings, the Northeast Reaching Agriculture Education Coordinator for the check presentation.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing me to be here for this special presentation. In two thousand, the North Carolina General Assembly created the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Foundation as part of the master settlement agreement with tobacco manufacturing companies. Its purpose is to fund grant programs that encourage a strong agriculture community and industry in our state by striving to make a positive impact on North Carolina producers. The commission is an advocate for agriculture, and projects that support current and former members of tobacco families are a priority for their funding. This year, the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Commission awarded over three hundred thousand dollars in grant funds to the North Carolina FFA Foundation to improve agriculture education programs across our state. This is our seventh time receiving this grant, now totaling well over a million dollars. Twenty agriculture education programs and FFA chapters were selected this year to receive these funds. And this evening, we are here to present one of these grants to Riverside Middle School in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars. So I'm going to ask Ms. Hager to come up and receive her check.
This is what it's all about. I'm glad our students could join us. Scott, thank you so much. And that concludes our good news, big news for tonight. But I must say, that's just another example of how our CTE department is going for every opportunity they put their hands on and bringing most of it back home. Thank you.
Congratulations to everyone that got an award tonight, and I thank all the parents for coming out and supporting our athletes and our scholars, and our scholar-athletes. We're just an impressive bunch of young people. So we'll give them just a moment, and then we'll move on.
Alright, let's move ahead with the superintendent's report. Wow, that's what I have to say right now, wow. There was a lot to celebrate this year in Martin County Schools. We had so many new adventures that proved to be so successful for our children. And that, what we just saw, was a testament of some of those successes this year. Could not be more proud of our students, of our staff, and of our entire community for coming together and making this an exceptional year for Martin County Schools. We said at the beginning of the year, "Welcome to the best year ever," and I truly believe that we have proved that throughout this school year. So let's look at our superintendent's report tonight. First of all, we want to celebrate the successes. All of our "of the years" were recently recognized at our Martin County Schools Excellence Banquet. This year, we added a new "of the year" with our Classified Employee of the Year. Our bus drivers, custodians, all of our non-classified staff do so much. Our teacher assistants do support Martin County Schools. We could not do what we do without our classified employees. And so this year, for the first time ever, we are recognizing a Classified Employee of the Year. And I want to congratulate Ms. Sherry Hanson from Riverside Middle School, who was selected as our first-ever Classified Employee of the Year. Be sure to check out all of their bios and special comments on our Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook website as well. Congratulations to Sherry Hanson, our Classified Employee of the Year. Our Martin County Schools Teacher of the Year is Ms. Marissa Siderson from South Creek Middle School. Such an honor to represent her. She's been with us quite a few years. Started as a Classified Employee in our district as a bus driver, worked her way up to teacher, and is an absolutely phenomenal teacher. She teaches EC at South Creek Middle School. So deserving of this honor. Congratulations, Marissa Siderson. Our Principal of the Year, Ms. Donna Manning from EJ Hayes Elementary School. Ms. Manning is one of the most dedicated principals that I've had the honor of working with. She is a sponge, soaking up every professional development, everything she can do to be the best for our children. And it's showing in the tremendous progress that EJ Hayes is making this school year. So congratulations to our Principal of the Year, Ms. Donna Manning. And our Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Stephanie Cottle. Ms. Cottle serves as an Assistant Principal at Riverside High School. However, this year, she has served as the administrator of our brand-new Innovative Early College. She has been instrumental in getting that off the ground this year. She brings a background in early college and has just been a wealth of knowledge for us as we have moved forward and had an amazing first year ever for Martin Innovative Early College. So congratulations to Ms. Cottle on being named our Assistant Principal of the Year. Moving right along, our kindergarten registration is still underway. If you have a child who will be five owner before August thirty-first, we need you. Getting your child registered early is absolutely imperative because we have class-sized caps. And once we get to certain numbers in kindergarten, we have to add more teachers. And when parents don't register their students until August, we get in a real pickle with not having enough teachers for our students when you register late. So it is imperative that you register your child now so that we can plan and make plans to have a phenomenal kindergarten year for your child. With that being said, we do have another kindergarten registration scheduled for June sixth. It'll be right here at the Innovation Campus between two-thirty and six-thirty. If you have not yet registered, please come out. Everything that you need to register your child is here. It's also on our website, on all social media. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. But it's imperative that you register your child now. If you have any questions, please feel free to call us at central office, and we'll be more than happy to answer those questions. I did want to add our end-of-year testing calendar. We began our testing last week in the elementary schools and some of our middle schools, and are continuing this week with all of our high school testing, as well as some of our middle school testing. Please make sure that your students are getting to bed early, having a good breakfast, and giving it a hundred and ten percent. They've worked hard all year, and we want them to show what they have learned on these tests. All of these calendars are published, again, on all of our social media and on the district website. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. Our summer feeding, I wanted to make sure everyone had this information. Our sites will be EJ Hayes Elementary and South Creek Elementary. It will be from eight AM to nine-thirty AM for breakfast. Lunch will be from eleven AM to twelve-thirty PM. Both sites are open June twelfth through July twenty-fifth, Monday through Thursday only. Our summer feeding sites are not open on Friday. We will be closed the week of July fourth, so July first through fifth, we will be closed. If you have any other questions about this, please don't hesitate to contact our Child Nutrition Director, Mr. Thomas Barber. Martin offers more. That has been our theme this year, and I truly believe we have lived up to it. We are offering new and innovative opportunities. Tonight, I did want to share a few of those things with you. Here, we have a calendar. We wanted to make sure that parents were well-informed about our end-of-year celebrations, awards, and activities. So we've compiled all of that on one document so that parents with multiple children can easily access where they need to be and when. This, again, is on all of our social media, as well as our website. I am so proud, again, of our two A regional runner-ups in softball. So proud to celebrate this team tonight. I mean, this team made it to the final four teams in the state of North Carolina. That is a huge accomplishment. First time ever playing two A. Martin County softball represented Martin County Schools so very well. I want to say a special congratulations to that team, and a special thank you to the coaches. Coaching is one of the most difficult jobs you can have. You put in a lot of extra hours, a lot of extra time. It is a work of heart, for sure. So I want to say special thanks to all of our coaches who give so much to support our children. Athletics is important. It's one of the, it's the reason that many of our children want to come to school every day, is to be able to participate in that. We're so thankful for the coaches that allow them to do that. We did want to let you know that Riverside Middle School is going to be offering free physicals on June fifth. Please take advantage of this opportunity. They'll be offered at the school, so you actually, all you have to do is fill out the paperwork. It was set home. However, if you need another copy, the school will be happy to provide you one. June fifth, free physicals at Riverside Middle School. MCS Arts Nights were amazing. So each of our schools, our middle schools and our high school, offered an Arts Night, where the visual arts were displayed, as well as our band programs perform. And if you missed it, you missed out. We are truly blessed with the best in the arts. This year, we added Ms. Cardwell as our Martin County Schools Arts Coordinator, and she has done a phenomenal job instituting some new opportunities, from our district Christmas concert to the Arts Nights. arts nights to several other new opportunities that we've had this year. If your child is into the arts, if that is something they love to do, then definitely Martin County Schools is the place to be. Thank you to all of our arts teachers from our visual arts to our band to our general music. Phenomenal job with the arts nights this year. E.J. Hayes is one of only 11 organizations in the state of North Carolina to receive a grant from Dominion Energy Charitable Foundation. Ms. Laura Frye, the art teacher, was funded for $5,000, which was a proposal for an arts-themed Pollinator Garden. Work recently began on the E.J. Hayes Elementary School project, which will also review, which will also revive the school's courtyard. They've started painting, the benches, they're working on murals. It is absolutely gorgeous, and they'll also have a pollinator garden. Special thanks to Ms. Frye for going above and beyond and seeking this opportunity for our children. They have really enjoyed this project. Also, the good news keeps coming. Martin County Schools was awarded $267,000. These funds will provide, help support our school resource officers. They're going to help us update some of our communication school tools, including our intercom systems in our school. We're going to be adding some things in the area of health and wellness to monitor our students. Health and wellness, including mental health supports for our students as well. So a big win right here for the students of Martin County Schools. Shout out to our JROTC program. If you are at special events throughout the community, odds are you're going to see these amazing young men and women, and I just wanted to take a moment tonight to say thank you to Captain Tanya McDade, who is our senior instructor, as well as all the students and parents that support their children. This is an amazing opportunity that's available in Martin County schools. These young men and women go above and beyond, provide a lot of leadership for the school and throughout our community. So thank you, Captain McDade, for all your work with our JROTC program. Tonight, you got to see our students who represented Martin County Schools at Iowa State University. Guys, there were more than 6,000 students at this competition from places all over the world, China, Korea, Japan, as well as 43 of the states were represented at this competition. And our students, this is the first time Martin County Schools has ever had an Odyssey of the Mind competition. Odyssey of the Mind is a problem-solving competition where you compete with other schools for the most creative, innovative, problem-solving techniques, and our students did come in 28th, and I think that is something to be incredibly proud of. They had never participated in this before, so that is a testament to the work of their teachers and the work of their coach. These kids really worked hard to earn this opportunity. They spent Saturday here, many Saturdays, working on this, and so another congratulations to our Martin County Schools World Finals team. They represented us very well. We have several summer camp opportunities. One of the things when I came last year, as parents said, we want more opportunities in the summer for our children, and so this year, we are delivering those opportunities. We have a STEM camp for grades three through eight. We have a career discovery camp. This will be July 9th through 11th, and is open to rising sixth graders. We have a career exploration camp for rising eighth and ninth graders. We have a career help science exploration camp for grades ninth and 10th graders. We have an AIG camp for grades five through eight. We have an innovative middle school camp. So if you were going to be in the innovative middle school next year, we have a camp just for you. You're going to be going to East Carolina University. You're going to be doing some really, really cool things. You're going to be doing some things with the arts, some things with STEM, so that is going to be June 24th through 27th. We're going to have, of course, our Read to Achieve Camp for third-grade students who want some extra reading support this summer. And we are also looking at two additional camps. We are exploring the possibility of an exceptionally STEM camp, a STEM camp for our exceptional students, and we are also exploring the idea of a score camp for grades six through eighth grade that will be, part of it will be athletic-focused, but it will also be focused on leadership characteristics and really giving our kids some additional opportunities at the middle school level for rising sixth through eighth grade. So if you are looking for summer camp opportunities, please stay tuned in. We've got all of these published all over our social media and website. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to call, and when our other two camps are finalized, we'll be pushing that out as well. In addition, we have been busy since the board voted at our last meeting. We will be moving to one high school permanently next year. We'll have Martin County High School, and so it is time to adopt a mascot for Martin County High School. Last week, students in grades kindergarten through seven nominated their choice for the mascot. We received many, many nominations, so the next step was for rising eighth through 11th graders to come together and narrow the field. Students in grade seven, their most nominated mascot was the Mustang, so that was added to the ballot to represent them. High school students came together to review all the nominations, and they narrowed it to their top three. The top three high school nominations are the Mavericks, the Gators, and the Hawks. So the final ballot will be the Mavericks, the Gators, the Hawks, and the Mustangs. What's next? Next, the students, staff, and community will be allowed to cast their votes. Students will be voting before they go home on Friday, which is the last day of school. We have two community voting polls that will be open. The first poll will be at South Creek High School on Tuesday, June 11th from 5:00 to 7:00. You will show, if you would like to cast your vote for our Martin County High School mascot, please come and bring your photo ID. This is an election process, so we will need to see your photo ID. Everyone in Martin County is invited to cast their vote. You have to be a resident of Martin County to cast your vote, and that's why we're doing it in person, because if you post a digital link, then people outside Martin County can vote, and we want this to be the voice of Martin County. Also, our second site will be at the Innovation Campus on Thursday, June 13th from 5:00 to 7:00. So come out in person and let your voice be heard as we select the next and final mascot for Martin County High School. Last, but certainly not least, Riverside Middle School was featured on WITN last week. Just in case you missed it, they did an amazing project with Jamesville Elementary School. Great things are happening at Riverside Middle School, and we want to make sure that the world knows about them. So one of our teachers was actually selected through a fellowship to go to Yellowstone last year. She came back and facilitated an amazing project with her students, and then those students then went to Jamesville Elementary School and taught those children about this process. If you would click that image, Mr. Bullock. And it's going to think about playing for us.
Watch NHL games live on a variety of networks.
This time of year in school is full of test stress and excitement as well as getting ready for the summer. One sixth-grade class is taking the time to learn about national parks in a fun and unique way. Merritt Morgan spoke to students and the teacher behind the lesson. She joins us live now in studio with more details. Hey, good morning, Merritt. How are these middle school students tackling our great national parks?
Yeah, hey, Jason. Good morning. Well, many students and teachers are getting ready for the summer. Landon Leggett's sixth-grade class is hard at work learning about Yellowstone National Park, but not in the way that one would think.
A unique way of learning for some sixth graders at Riverside Middle School.
A lot of fun projects with painting and posters and badges. I cut out bird feathers. This was probably my favorite project of the year.
Not your average lesson plan.
We have done a virtual escape room so the kids could kind of explore through the park. They've done stations. We've incorporated in a little bit of EOG prep. They've explored the geology of the park, the animals in the park, the birds in the park, the role of park rangers.
All to learn about national parks, specifically the first, Yellowstone.
I learned a lot about the geysers and how the environment impacts them and how the geysers impact the environment.
Structural learning reports that students retain 75% of what they learn when they practice hands-on and 90% of what they learn when they teach someone else.
Don't make the noise!
That's why Leggett's lesson doesn't stop there. Leggett students provided hands-on learning experiences to kindergarten and second graders at Jamesville Elementary.
Kids love when they can, you know, make things and create. It helps it stick in their brains a little better when they're able to touch it and work with it and make it, and even to a certain extent, make it their own. They're allowed to have a lot of creative freedom with what they do, and they love it.
For both the students and teachers.
They loved what they were doing. They had the best time. It makes all the work that teachers do, it makes it worth it when the kids have a good time and they learn at the same time.
To provide an environment for both educators and those in their care to learn and grow.
This was awesome. Just going to the school and like seeing how like happy those kindergarten and second graders were after we did the project with them, they were thrilled.
And Leggett says the Yellowstone project all got started when she was selected to go to Yellowstone in January by the Museum of Natural Science and their Progressive Development Program. Jason?
Looks like an absolute blast. Wish I was doing that in sixth grade.
Me neither.
All right, thanks, Merritt. For more information on the museum's Progressive Development Program, a link can be found on our website, witn.com.
So many wonderful things are happening throughout Martin County schools, and I just want to say a special thank you to all the teachers, administrators, classified staff who make these kind of amazing learning opportunities possible every single day. Martin County Schools is truly blessed with the best, and we're very thankful for our staff that choose us and our students as well. Thank you so much. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. White. Move on into the information slash action items. The Better Together update. Ms. Christy Robertson?
Good evening, Chairman Heath, Dr. White, and members of the Board of Education. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come speak to you tonight on behalf of Better Together. I'm hoping that I'm getting ready to give you one more success story of something that we've been given the opportunity to provide for our students this year. If you've been around me or at any meeting that I've been a part of, this is something that is very near and dear to my heart, and I'm very passionate about it. So I put together a presentation tonight. We have started meeting on a regular basis with our board, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update as to where we are and what we've been doing. Better Together Martin County Schools, you have to be smarter than the technology you're working with, don't you? Ah, Better Together Martin County Schools is a new organization that is designed to bring our community resources together. It's about bringing our students together with faith-based organizations, community organizations. Also, it's here to help our students be able to quickly and efficiently meet any type of needs, basic needs, that they may or may not be getting at home. This is where we started. Thanks to Dr. White and Ms. Andrea Lilly, Sarah Stalls, and Leanne Stokes. The four of them were gracious enough to sit down with me and talk about the program that was being offered in Beaufort County, which you may be familiar with, Bright Futures, and how could we get that here. There were quite a few meetings that were put together, how we wanted to do it, where we wanted to come from, and that has led us, does this thing work? There we go, to where we are now. Our board members, I am the chairman of the group at this time, as well as a parent representative. We have our co-chair and business rep, Ms. Myra Allen, our human services representative, Mr. Drew Robinson, faith-based representative, Ms. Cynthia Point. We have a business representative, Ron Toppin. Ms. Vicky Manning is on behalf of the Rotary. Andrea Lilly is the county rep. Leanne Stokes is our school rep, and we have four community members, Ms. Susan Shelton, Ms. Renee Purvis, Ms. Phyllis Parker, and Ms. Tina Brown. Those make up the board that we are currently meeting with, and it has been a phenomenal experience thus far. Term limits would be limited to three years. People would have the option of serving two terms, but basically, we're looking for people who are passionate about our youth, who are open-minded, who want to be helpful, who are trustworthy. This group or Better Together is about protecting the privacy of those individuals that are needing help. So I get a request, but I have no idea who the child is. It's very private, and somebody who's going to volunteer their time, their talents, and their resources. So it's not just a financial thing. It's really just being a part of something bigger than youth. So how the process works is a student's need is reported to their school counselor or their school nurse or the school social worker. A counselor fills out a form. It is then emailed to the Better Together email address. We will put together a post that's posted on our Facebook page, and then when that need is met, we'll coordinate pickup or drop-off or whatever has to happen for the need that's requested. So you may ask, how can you plug in? And there's a lot of people in this room that have already plugged in, and we're so grateful for them, but if you see a need that's been requested, you can certainly donate for that need. It can go directly to the school, or there may be a drop-off point that's been talked about. You could give to a specific school or project. So not only is Better Together about posting the needs of a student, but you may have seen where we've posted something that the band is in need of or they're doing a fundraiser. So those are also things that Better Together is trying to support. But volunteer. If we have an opportunity, show up, be there, help us out. You could also make a one-time donation, or you can give as often as you like. Simply share in the requests that are on our Better Together Martin County Schools website. That is the biggest thing that we can ask you to do. You may hit a family member or a friend in the community that doesn't know about us, or that need may serve something that hits personal to them. So having you guys share those posts for us is very helpful. And something that we do have coming will be a site council. We haven't set those up yet, but it would be almost like your own little Better Together board within each school who will help, who could help with things, kind of like your PTAs do. Oh, it got way ahead of me. So here's what we've done since February the 26th. We've served four seniors from Riverside South Creek High School. We've tapped out two Martin baseball players. We've assisted a family in Jamesville, and we've assisted four families at Williamson Primary School. For me, I'm very excited about that. Those were needs that a teacher did not have to specifically assist for, and as we know, that's typically what happens. Our teachers are seeing these needs, and they're serving them individually. This allowed the community to see those needs posted and come and assist us with those. We facilitated, like I said, senior fees. We facilitated baseball cleats, a washing machine, clothing items, shoes, and a coat. So if you're looking for a way to financially contribute, thanks to Ms. Vicky Manning and the Martin Terrell Washington Public Health, we are able to offer nonprofits, or have our nonprofit status through them where people can make donations to receive a tax-deductible letter if they so choose. I believe we're actually sending those out to anybody that sends, checks in or leaves their address with us. We started in March of 2024 with $620. Currently, we have $2,100, and those have not been huge donations that any company or businesses necessarily provided. Those have been small donations, you know, that families have put in, which I think speaks volumes for this type of project. This was our first need that we posted on February the 26th. It was two high school seniors that needed help with their senior fees. That need was met within less than an hour. Then, the next post that we made was about clothing needs for young children, and we had 41 shares for that, and there were a lot of clothes that showed up as well at the school that needed that help. So that was very exciting for those children. One of the school nurses actually came and told me that one of the little girls, she's seen her in her sparkly shoes every day. So that did exactly what it was supposed to for me. It's not just about academics, as we've seen here tonight with the extracurricular activities, but as well as the athletic piece of things. We're also serving needs for students who may not have access to cleats or a uniform or something that they need. So we were able to actually help two students with baseball cleats for the baseball team this year. And as I stated a few minutes ago, it's not just about supporting a need specifically that And as I stated a few minutes ago, it's not just about supporting a need specifically that a family might have, but it's about supporting our programs and where we currently are. If you haven't seen the Martin County Band post, they're looking for meal sponsors, so here's my shameless plug for them. But yeah, those are ways that we, as the general public, can help facilitate a need that the school system has and how we can help be better together. Okay, so what do we need from you? It is our hope that we can maintain a balance at all times of $5,000 for this Better Together program. What we're coming tonight to ask you also is to consider an initial donation of maybe $3,000. Certainly, I work with local government. I know how budgets are. I know how budget prep works. But we had to have a starting point. So that's where we're going to start. Ask you to consider making a donation of some sort. And also, if you would consider in your budget prep, some form of annual donation to keep this program running. As I said before, it is something that we are largely seeking out for the community, but also want to be able to show that the Board of Education supports this program as well. Any questions? I give up on this. Thank you.
Next is the Policy Revision Update, Second Reading. Ms. Andrea Lilly?
Good evening. For the 2000 series policy updates, I'd like to present to you policies 2000 through 2,320, which is 21 of the policies, not all of the 2000 series, for a second reading tonight and approval. The first reading was on April 22nd. And one of those that I would like to clarify is 2310 for public participation at board meetings. The recommendation is that we keep that time limit for speakers at 20 minutes. And there was a recommendation in there to change to 30 or a possible change for 30. But our recommendation is that we keep that at 20. Any other questions about the first 21 policies in that group of policies in that series? I'd like to ask for approval for the first 21, which is 2,000 through 2,320.
Move to approve. Second?
Have a motion to approve and a second for Martin County Schools' policies 2000 through 2,320. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. And we move right on into the next set.
For policy 3100, there has been a name change from Correspondence and Independent Study Course of Credits to Dual Enrollment. The Dual Enrollment Policy supports a rigorous expanded curriculum that will adequately prepare students for future educational and workplace endeavors. And the board is asked for supporting high school students who also wish to enroll in classes taught at the college, university, community college, or other approved entity. And for this, the change to the policy adds information for college and career promise. And the College and Career Promise Program is designed to offer qualified high school students structured dual enrollment opportunities that provide both entry-level job skills as well as pathways leading to certificate, diploma, and degree. I'd like to request that we approve this policy 3101 on first read tonight since we are currently involved in the career and college promise already.
Need a motion?
Move to approve policy 3101.
Second?
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve policy 3101. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lilly.
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education into closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute 115(c)(319) and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board would also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232G and North Carolina Statute 115(c)(402). The board would also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Alright, we have a motion for closed session. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Closed session granted.
Close session, all in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Thank you. Need a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations for contract renewals as presented in closed session.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the superintendent's recommendations for contract renewals as presented in closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations for non-renewal contracts as presented in closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the superintendent's recommendations for non-renewal contracts as presented in closed session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Thank you. And I need a motion to approve the closed session minutes and to keep them closed.
So moved.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to approve the closed session minutes and to keep them closed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Thank you.
Standards for public comment. Number one, individuals be given three minutes to make their presentations. Request to speak for a group will be granted five minutes to address the board. Number two, individuals or groups will be called on to speak in the order on the sign-up sheet. Number three, if an individual is not present or declines to speak, the next person on the sign-up sheet will be called upon. Number four, if the 20-minute period ends during a speaker's presentation, the public comment period will end at the conclusion of the time period allotted to the presenter. Number five, any materials that the individual or group wishes to present to the board should be submitted prior to the meeting so they can be distributed. Number six, the board will not respond to comments except to request clarification of points made by the presenter. Number seven, the superintendent will provide a written response for questions posed to the board within 10 working days of the meeting. And number eight, the board will not hear public comments relating to personnel issues or student issues that are under investigation by the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Fergus. Ms. Brooks? You'd signed up to speak?
I did.
Okay. It's your time.
Tell me when you begin timing, please.
You may begin.
Good evening to all. Dr. White, Martin County Board of Education members, and the children of Martin County schools. I bid you a new year of boundless joy, holistic educational learning, and delivering enough for all children under your auspices during the remaining of the 2023-24 year and the upcoming 2025 year. Thank you for your public forum opportunity. At first, you had it at the beginning of the year of the board meeting, and now you have it at the end. I still thank you. God bless the children, for many of our children are suffering for such a time as this. Technology, school, home environment, mental challenges, drugs, killing, stealing, suicide, homeless, and others. I pray that you will include diversity, equity, justice, and enough for brighter Martin County schools. Are you as diverse as you should be? I have presented to you Hobgood Academy Charter School, which will be opening 2425 school year, where my parents live on the northern end, and I pray that the children who get on the bus 5 o'clock in the morning to come to Williamson, I pray that they get the opportunity. Also gave you Hobgood a nice place to live, and you know, you're spending a lot of money in advertisement now. See the new charter school? Halifax County has seven school systems. When we went, there was only one, only one Martin County system. What's happening, people? What are we doing in education? God help the children. God bless each of you, and I pray you do what's best for all children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Righty. Announcements?
Okay. We are so excited. We have our graduations coming up on June 8th. South Creek High School will be at South Creek High School at 9:00 a.m. Riverside High School will be in the Martin County Schools Auditorium at 11:30 a.m. June 27th, we'll have our year-end board work session, and July 8th will be our next regularly scheduled meeting.
All righty. Any board members have anything else they'd like to bring up this evening? If not...
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say, I see a guest out here, Ms. Acquisha Piergreen-Hollins. She put in an application with us, as well as other counties, and she has taken upon herself to go to each county where she has filled out an application and attend that board meeting just to see how things are. So, welcome to Martin County Board meeting.
Good evening.
We appreciate you coming.
Anything else? All right. Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Meeting's adjourned.